The city of Plymouth City Council meeting for May 12th, 2022 is called the order. Could we take a roll call please, bring? Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Stan.
Here.
Councilmember Amber Russo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfelder.
Here.
Can we please stand with this, can you do this on key?
But the motion is to deploy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
There is no implication on the agenda this evening, so I would entertain a motion on item number two, approval of city council regular meeting agenda for May 12th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And moved in second to approve the agenda for the city as presented. Could we have a roll call now, please? Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stan.
Aye.
Councilmember Amber Russo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelder.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number three of what is public comments. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda, they do so at this time by completing and submitting the speaker's submitted form to the city clerk or following the COVID-19 invites or instructions noted on the first page of this agenda. Speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to please state name and community of residence, but doing so is not required. Under provisions of Government Code, the Government Code, the city council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So I will open up public comment to those in City Hall. Okay, I see the rush. Do we have any public comment on Zoom?
It looks like Jim Wise would like to speak.
Jim Wise, who are recognized.
Thank you, and I hope I'm getting over this technological challenge, so I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you. It was dark to begin with, Jim, but then it cleared up and was better. I think I would just speak up a bit if you could. With technology problems, Dana?
Yeah.
Is, I don't know if that is any better at all now.
It's very good.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, thanks for an opportunity just to bring one little issue to the attention of the City Council. I just wanted to point out that May 30th is Memorial Day, and we have a Veterans Park in our city as well as our city's designation as a Purple Heart City, and I'd like to ask for some consideration if the city would maybe consider creating a small program in Veterans Park on Memorial Day. I don't think it needs necessarily be elaborate or large, but I think just some recognition of the services that have been afforded our country from individuals from our community, and if there is something that the city might consider doing in Veterans Park for Memorial Day. I know that there are members of the Rotary Club Committee working with the city to bring Veterans Park to some type of a greater acknowledgement of the service of the sacrifices by our men and women in uniform, but I would ask that we would consider maybe to do something in Veterans Park on that day.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim. That's a wonderful idea. You know that we can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda, but I think it would be something for us to consider, and if we need to, we could have a special meeting. We may not need to do that to do an informal celebration at the park, but we will discuss it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment on Zoom? We will close public comment at this time. Item number four on the agenda is appointments and presentations, and this evening we have APRA update presentation and introduction. Thank you.
Good evening. Justin Howard, Director of APRA, Amher County Recreation Agency, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. It's nice to finally meet everybody. I'm really excited to be giving this presentation to you because when I was appointed to this position at the end of June '21, you know, as everybody knows, we've dealt with the ups and flows of COVID surges and drops and resurgence, so this last month has been really exciting for us as an agency in bringing some good quality programming to the county. So I'll just kind of briefly touch on what we're offering and what's coming up soon, just some things I'm really excited about. We have, we established really great adult programs, meaning recurring monthly and biweekly programs. This includes Bingo every night of the week. We have Trivia biweekly, which has had a lot of great feedback. We now have line dancing twice a month, soon to be three times a month. And we also have an open mic night, which actually I will be stopping at Dry Town on my way home from this meeting. So a lot of great recurring programs that generate a little bit of revenue for the agency, but more importantly, give members of the community sort of an outlet, something that falls into that recreation blanket. In terms of, in terms of our youth programming, I am very appreciative of the city of Plymouth prioritizing average school care for youth. We got that contract all finalized, and although it started a bit slow, we have gotten to a point now where we hold pretty steady, between about nine to 11 kids Monday through Thursday, so I feel like that is the great value for the city of Plymouth. And we're happy to provide the instructors and different activities curriculum for that. We're actually just brought on a youth programs supervisor who has a lot of experience. She was running the ELP program in Jackson, so through the school district, and she's going to become a horse of really great ideas to keep expanding our youth programs, which I know is always something that's still in everybody's heart to have youth programs. Our summer fun days youth program is filling up unbelievably quickly. We have an eight-week summer program at Amber High School in Southern Creek. And right now, our lowest attendance week is 21 kids, and our highest is 35. So we've actually upgraded our facility. We're going from a portable to now cafeteria. So bringing on some more summer staff, just offering, you know, really great summer program with extended pre and post camp care for, you know, the parents that work a little bit longer. In addition to that, our pool program is also on track to have its biggest season yet. We acquired the management agreement for the city of Jackson, which is really exciting because now when someone gets a season passed, they can literally go to any of the public pools in the county, which is really, I think, a great value. We're going to be offering swim lessons this year at all of our pools, which is also really exciting. We're already getting signups like crazy. We're going to have some here in Plymouth, and I just finalized that pamphlet, so I have about 200 pamphlets once they're folded up. I'm hoping they were folded up today at the office, so I can drop the staff off here in Plymouth so we can distribute those. And we're just going to keep riding this trend of providing quality recreation programming, ideally at a low cost, and just keep expanding. So that's sort of been on what I've been up to. Really proud of the product that we have at this point, and I can't wait to check in in one month's time, three months' time, to show you how much we're continuing the trend in that direction. I appreciate the time to let me fill you in, and I look forward to maybe having some meetings with some city council members. I'm happy to answer any questions too while I'm here.
Oh, thank you for the presentation. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Representative?
Oh, good job, and good luck. Awesome. It's important for us.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's an honorable priority for me is to continue growing our programs. We're going to have this as on new programs.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Item number five on the agenda is the consent calendar. I would entertain a motion from Council for approval.
Make a motion to accept the calendar as presented. Sir.
And moved in second to approve the consent calendar as presented. Roll call now, please. Councilmember White.
Staying because I wasn't at last week.
I think you can abstain from the minutes without abstaining to the entire vote, but that would be for a fraction.
I think you could probably just similar because technically I'd step back away. So I would just, since we didn't pull it separately, just stay from the whole item.
Okay. Councilmember Stan.
Aye.
Councilmember Amber Russo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelder.
Aye.
Thank you. There are no public hearings this evening. Item number seven is regular agenda items. 7.1, adopt resolution number 2022-09 to claim May 22nd as Mental Health Matters Month in the city of Plymouth. I would like to recognize the Vice Mayor Ackerman and also Councilmember White for bringing a lot of these things forward, and I think Councilmember Ackerman would have something to say.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to note that we did receive two emails in support. The first one is from Nina Machado, who's with First Five of Amher, and I believe we saw Nina at our previous meeting doing a presentation on First Five Amher. And so Nina took the time to send us an email in support of this, as well as Stephanie Hess, who's the Program Coordinator for Amher County Behavioral Health Services, also supporting this, and she provided additional information about mental health issues and how that impacts folks. So if they're listening, I want to thank them for taking the time to write in and support this.
I would entertain any comments about this agenda item from the audience at City Hall.
Hi, I'd like to speak in favor of this resolution. My name is Steve Christiansen, and I live in Southern Creek. I have a mental illness in my family. Now, how do you feel when I said I have mental illness? Do you feel afraid, have I never done, or are you repelled? Are you judgmental? I don't see, he's already crazy. When I added "in my family," did your reaction change from fear and avoidance to empathy and support? What if I began with telling you I had cancer in my family? Would you feel, would your feelings change? If you thought I had cancer, or that someone in my family had cancer, do you feel sorry for me? Would you ask me questions about, where is the cancer? What treatment am I getting? How do I feel? Is anything you could do to help? Cancer patients, probably this will be easier to talk. Cancer patients will fight to get care. People with psychosis will fight to resist it. When a person admits to having a mental illness, we ask none of those questions. We call this difference in reaction stigma. People will say that stigma is the biggest problem in mental health. I've learned another word that, to me, describes the biggest problem in mental health, and that word is discrimination. Stigma invokes victimization and, unfortunately, inaction. Discrimination calls for social justice. Discrimination fuels fear and ignorance of people with mental illness. That is why so many people do not seek treatment. Americans respond to mental illness with fear and avoidance. Remember Tom Segelfen? He was a vice presidential nominee, who, when it was revealed that he had been hospitalized with bouts of depression throughout his life, was forced to quit the race. People didn't want some crazy person to be vice president. In contrast to other diseases that you get or you have, many people with mental illness still define who you are. What I'm looking for is to have the standards we expect for medical and surgical care to apply to the treatment of mental illness. Many of the pressing social need issues of the last decade, homelessness, incarceration, poverty, can be tracked in part to our nation's failure to care for people with mental illness. Mental health care is mostly focused only on relieving symptoms and not on helping people recover. Nearly 80% of antidepressants and anti-anxiety medications are prescribed by primary care physicians. Recovery is more than a reduction of symptoms. It is a return to a full and meaningful life. Recovery, it's the three Ps. It's people. We should focus on hospitality, not hospitalization. Place, a safe place to live that means dignity and purpose. It's about creating meaning through finding work. The mental health problem is medical, but the solutions are not just medical. They are social, environmental, and political. We have hope. The inconvenient truth is that the mental health crisis is a human rights crisis. We think of people with mental illness whenever there is a mass killing, and in fact, mental health is a major killer, but not by homicide, by suicide. Even before COVID, mental illness was claiming a life every 11 minutes by suicide. You've all read about Naomi Chud, who committed suicide, who suffered from mental health. In 2019, it was reported that 228 suicides by police officers. During that same year, the FBI reported 89 police officers had lost their lives in the line of duty. Eighty-nine died in the line of duty. 228 police officers committed suicide. Every year, firearms are used in about 25,000 suicides and nearly 14,000 homicides. That's 14,000 homicides, 25,000 suicides by firearms. Statistically, the gun purchase for protection is nearly 80% more likely to be used by a family member to end their own life than used against someone else. What works is a series of treatment-focused programs that provide housing, routine, treatment, but most of all, social support. People with mental illness should be treated in the same healthcare facilities and covered by the same insurance with equivalent benefits, a mandate that in law is known as parity. There is no focus on the national level to support mental health since President Kennedy and Johnson. The responsibility of care resides in states and counties. When Governor Reagan started closing state hospitals, he was dismantling a flawed system but created a new one. What was once called insane asylums, we now call prisons. Jails and prisons have become a de facto mental health hospitals. The difference is that people went to state hospitals for treatment, people go to prison for punishment. I know, because the last job I had before I retired was a teacher in the psychiatric ward of California State Prison, Sacramento. All my students were diagnosed with some level of mental illness, and they were lying. The Los Angeles County Jail is now the largest mental health institution in the nation. A person in Amher County who is having serious mental health is taken to an emergency room at the hospital and admitted as a 5150. When a 5150 patient is discharged from the hospital, it is a discretion of the insurance company, not a medical decision. There are those in this county that say that homeless people with mental illness are being buskied. That is totally false. Many are people who grew up here. People with serious mental illness are living like refugees in their own towns. They have come to accept all this as normal, but we would not accept this for any other medical condition. Every one of these people have a treatable condition. That is why Mental Health Matters Month in May, say that's a good time to be all fast, within the literation, is so important. It is an opportunity to tell people that it is okay to be not okay. It helps get people with mental illness to get out of the closet. It is an opportunity to fight for social justice for those friends and family members who have a mental illness, an illness that is treatable and curable. People with mental health can recover. Our message this month should be that we are confronting those who are disturbed while disturbing those that are comfortable. I have a couple of suggestions. Put an iPad with telehealth software in every police cruiser. That can connect that cruiser to a crisis support unit so mental health staff can join every crisis response call anytime, anywhere. Crisis, number two, crisis response is a mental health mobile van with a nurse, a social worker, and a peer, not a medical surgical ambulance or a police cruiser. And three, schools need to be committed to mental fitness in the same way as they are for physical fitness. This is a national problem. The moral test of government is how that government treats those who are at the dawn of life, children, those who are in the twilight of their life, the elderly, and those who are in the shadow of life, the sick, the needy, and the handicapped. Build in a community through the way of proof, through the way of compassion and connection, through the way of justice, through the way of God, through the way of love. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christiansen. Is there anyone?
Mr. Christiansen? Your mask, your mask.
And the mic and, yes, your mask. Is there anyone else in City Hall that would like to speak on the issue of the resolution? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on this agenda item? Does anyone on the council have any questions, comments? Does anyone on Council have any questions, comments regarding this resolution?
Um, yeah, I guess I should speak a little bit on most of the stuff I've been going through in the last few days. I, uh, I understand that this is a step in the direction of a very slow moving cog is what I'm really understanding at this, uh, at this juncture. I am. When we talk about discrimination with mental health, I don't know if it's discriminatory thing because I think every human being suffers with some element of mental health. It would steal you with stress, whatever, but it's all at different levels and different heights and things of that nature. Really looking into the biggest part about this resolution is maybe just it's a little bit more sense of community. I talked to a gentleman today who spoke. The fixes community, fixes community, and I, if you asked me a year ago about the site, say the fixes, the family household, the fixes. I, it doesn't really matter, but it is a sense of community. I, uh, I, I, this week I got to go into one of the unhoused camps with, um, a lady who was in charge of all those passports for the city of Jackson. Or a coworker, everything else, and I don't really want to get into the issue or the reasons why I did that. And the shocking thing that I didn't even realize it, and it hit me like a ton of bricks is, but if someone walked into your house, what if someone just walked right in here? Because that's what I did. I walked into their house as a no guest. And who was I? What was I doing there? And that was a real eye opener and I don't think our public knows that. I just kind of wanted that stuff on record.
Thank you very much. Say what else? How many questions, comments?
I'm just, uh, sitting here absorbing what I just heard from Mr. Christiansen. Christiansen, thank you. That was fantastic. The way, the way, the way you delivered that message was terrific. Sitting here thinking, absorbing what you said. Thank you so much for coming.
Mr. Christiansen, thank you for taking the time and, and, and speaking to all of us. And, um, I think that, you know, we, we are such a small community, which, which is, 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 is wonderful because we could start the conversation and I, I couldn't agree more with so much of what you said, especially with, with stigma being such a big, being so problematic. And, and if, if we could just start with increasing some awareness, which I hope is what this resolution will do. And, um, and, 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 and for us all of us here to, to set the example. Um, and when we think about the language that we use when we're talking about folks and families that are impacted by, uh, uh, mental health issues. I think it's a great starting point and to your point of, um, comparing, um, mental illness to something like cancer, which as a nurse, I, I couldn't agree more. Their, their medical conditions, their health conditions, they're both equally important. And when you have a family member, friend, loved one, or yourself, and you share with everybody quite openly that, you know, somebody you love, whether it's yourself or somebody else has cancer. Um, you know, everybody rushes to you and what can I do? What, you know? But, but when you, when you have a, a mental illness or your loved one does, um, you have a tendency to, to not talk so openly about it. And if you do, there's nobody there with the casseroles. Nobody, nobody's brain has casseroles saying, what can I do? And, uh, so I think to just enlighten everybody, increase awareness. Um, something that we can start here in our wonderful little community of, of Plymouth. But can't thank you enough for coming and, and speaking to us.
No, I just want to say thank you very much. That was very, very. Thank you. Yes, appreciate you coming in.
Sure. Um, I also wanted to thank you very much, Mr. Christiansen again. I am a person that has a mental health, um, issue in the family. So I understand the stigma and the difficulty in society and it's not just the stigma. It's the training of everyone that would come into contact with a person. It's a lot of enforcement. It's the healthcare providers. It's the entire system has to be thought about differently and trained. So I want to, um, thank everyone for getting this on the agenda. It's a very important issue. I would entertain a motion on Resolution twenty-two oh nine. If you can remember to include the resolution number in the motion, I would appreciate it.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine to proclaim May two thousand twenty-two as Mental Health Matters Month in City of Plymouth. Second.
Trying to do is make this a repeatable model year after year, self-sufficient. In other words, that everyone is participating, puts this as part of their budgets. The people that are nonprofits are sharing their time. This is a two-day event. This is a much bigger ask of the community and the nonprofits and the first responders than they normally do. But we are finding that in the end, it's actually more beneficial to the community because everyone can come and get all of their answers in one place. Most safety preparedness bears, do vendors or you have the fire department or you may have a sheriff. We have literally everyone, even insurance is showing up. Emergency communication, animals, large and small, a kids zone. Everything we can think of because it's very personal, it's very individual. Each one of you there has a different need when you are preparing for a disaster and when you react to a disaster. Maybe you're on four acres, maybe you're on four hundred acres. It's a very different picture. So this is a way to both be resource efficient and bring everyone to one place and also get the most chance that the public can get their information and their answers. And I guess everybody weren't expecting it to quite grow, because it is. Um, every agency in Amador, except for one fire protection district is doing a burn that day, is participating. We are also having daily other organizations reach out to us. Red Cross, Restart, obviously the animal preparation, uh, Forest Service is there. California Fire Safe Council is there. And as you know, the Insurance Commissioner's Office, um, asked us to participate in a statewide forum because of this event to get the word out to every other counties and communities. How are you doing this? How are you making this comprehensive one stop shop? Get the word out and making it fun. We need to draw in the public. And so that's what we're doing. But we did run into some budget issues. Um, I've never had an event come in in red, by the way. All my events have come in, in the black. This one will come in the black. If, uh, I have to sell funding, I will. Um, but we did have such a huge import from the media interest that we had to have a local, uh, person here who can handle the media. It's gotten that big. I can't reach out to the TV stations. I don't have the time, I have a full-time job and we had to bring her in because this has got to be done professionally. Don't want Amador County to be representing anything less than one hundred percent cohesive and know what we're doing. And I would have not been able to do what this person was doing. So we're having those come in. We're also having major, uh, California agencies show up. And again, it's a level of professionalism we need to represent and present at this event. We are being given incredible discounts, but again, we are over budget with additional need.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I understand that this is a lot for our communities here in Amber County. Is, but this event's open up to the public. Are any of the vendors from outside the county coming? Or, I guess, when again, are motels being rented or is that?
Yeah, as far as we know, um, because we've had a lot of interest from Sacramento, El Dorado Hills, Rancho Marietta. Um, yes, people are looking at coming in on that weekend. We're also bringing people in from us that need to stay here from the different agencies. Yeah. We're also trying to make this, everything is, is Amador focused. But we are bringing in calculators, for instance, that have ties to the county, but also coming in from Sacramento. And they're bringing in their social media following. We're, I hope we have enough hotel rooms.
I, I have a question. Who else have you asked to donate to this cause other than Platteville, Jackson, South Creek?
Oh, absolutely.
The, the insurance companies. Are there any others? Because I read this whole package. There's not one word about it. I, so I see all the sponsors. I don't see anybody donating money to your, to your.
I. Let me guide that for you. We have been beating the bushes and part of this is it's an incredibly compressed timeframe to get this stuff and running between COVID and the year. We are currently running at thirty-seven thousand dollars that we've raised. Um, I have fronted over fourteen thousand dollars in expenses just to make sure we keep moving in a timely manner. We have gotten donations from an individual. We have gotten donations from California Fire Chiefs Association.
Are you talking for fifty dollars? Are we talking about some?
No, actually the Fire Chiefs Association gave us ten thousand dollars. They were a huge contributor.
We're about the other cities in our county. We're about the other cities in our county, our Jackson, South Creek, Idaho.
Not gone to other city councils. We were starting with everyone else that we could, like, sort of the participating agencies and organizations. And frankly, we're just out of time.
Yeah, we, we started with a small city in Polk County.
Oh, I'm sorry. To me, this is my local city and that's why I'm here. And because Amber Fairgrounds is, and is the evacuation center. And that is located in Plymouth. It never occurred to me to go to South Creek and Jackson just because it isn't here. It's not located in their city.
But you're talking fires in the county, talking about a disaster. I think that you would look to Jackson, Idaho, South Creek, who are far bigger than we are. And the fairgrounds that you brought them on to us in state California, right? I just don't understand why you did, why you would spend time chasing those dollars as well. It's coming to.
Because frankly, I didn't think of going to the other cities.
Well, name, name your other donors on your list already. Fire.
California Fire Chiefs Association, Center Health, uh, Jackson Rancheria, the Highway Patrol, New Cal Metals, which has Vulcan Vents, um, California Fire Foundation, the Amber Fire Safe Council, Private Individuals Votah Insurance, um, and Top Pop.
And what was total? Over there.
And we are. Oh, I'm sorry. They're roughly coming in at about thirty-five. And we have a total in our budget of thirty-seven, six hundred and fifteen dollars and fourteen cents. And that includes all the vendor fees we're. So I appreciate your concern. Thank you. If I had the time. Each city could just give us a couple of thousand dollars to do it. Yeah. And we may be able to do it from retail sales and regain. Time shows up, I just walk them in the door.
Pen factors of about thirty thousand dollars. You're asking for, say, ten thousand dollars roughly. One third of all of these various entities, right?
Yes. And every, so when it happens, our budgets start off much smaller and we're facing a short fall right at this critical period. We have not even two weeks left. Which are, which are current budget. Yeah, so the current budget is forty-nine thousand and change. And that covers everything. That is literally everything. There are no more surprises. Um, that from. I. Hey, the people, even when they're willing to donate. Taxpayers money from the city of Plymouth. But this budget is fourteen thousand dollars for the two days. And it's, and where they, was the fair board asked to do any refused. Great. I did not go to the fair board. And sold, these are the prices. So I didn't audition. At least I did act. Anyway, that for two days here, maybe have, you know, higher than this rate. And we're still working. For, um, thousand dollars. So, and taxpayers. That's for a lot of funds for the use. April, that's seventeen thousand three hundred and five. That is literally every person. Normally the. This. This. Has to be sponsorship. People are going out and literally getting us money. So to get perspective, sorry, the Amber Fire. A hundred and forty. That's what proves. So. And I'm not. That those people contributing for time. That's fine. That's right. So that's. The end. I understand that if we don't have the money, they can't get paid. And they feel that this is. And is. Is. Idea of people or is members of their staff. This. And in fact, we have the same going with OBS, Sheriff's Department, Architecture Districts, all of the groups in Amber County, the first responders are contributing at their time and resources as they're able, but no one is officially owning this because that's a. Was the county of Amber asked to.
I guess some more comments just something to keep in the back of my mind. I do think that we need to remember that. Progressors themselves have gone through COVID themselves through the time and have not had a lot of events there. I know that the new CEO there is for sure as the CEO, it would have a paycheck because of how much he loves the community. So I do know that there is some budgeting and money struggles there. I mean, we've heard for many years that, oh, we don't know, this might be our last fair. So there is that part of it. But I also understand that this is the City of Plymouth's taxpayers, tax money that's going towards us. The other thing is, is. If I was Dear, first place I'd come to ask money at City of Plymouth because I'm going to get the fairgrounds is in the city. You know, I understand that this is a learning experience. I, I would recommend extra, first place I'd go, board supervisors.
Good, I did write, I did reach out to them and I think I might get 500 bucks. So, and I appreciate the issue with the fair grants. To me, I have to think of them as a venue. I mean, they could be any other venue for rent. They're a business and I need to respect that.
May I support it? It supports our community.
Well, I think we all support it and what, and what the information disseminated, but it's, the, the question is, is about spending public funds to disseminate the information that should be disseminated by these other agencies as well. So I think there's, there's some issues, but what I'd like to do is ask the members of the public in the audience, in City Hall, if they have any questions or comments for Dear Trump or anything on this agenda item. Yes?
I have to say, Chris, again, and I did not have any prior statements for this. I didn't even know it was an agenda until I saw it. And I'm very much in favor of this resolution and I'd like to tell you why. My in-laws own the house in Paradise. And they died several years ago and the house has been passed on to my wife. The day of the campfire that roared through Paradise, I was on my way to a religious conference up in Ready. And my wife and I had not been able to contact her sister who lived next, next door to the house that my parents and in-laws had owned. So on my way up to the ready, I stopped in Chico to look for her. When I left Sacramento, it was about 74 degrees. When I got to Chico, it was like 38 degrees. There was so much smoke in the air that you could not, I mean, it just, there was no sun coming through. It was like driving through a truly fog, except it was smoking. I went to the emergency center that they had set up. I just guessed it would be at their fairgrounds. So I was able to find the fairgrounds and find somebody and to report my sister-in-law missing. When I got there, I ran into two nurses who had been at the Feather Rivers Hospital during the fire. They were still wearing their blues and there were burn marks all over their uniform. But it had a large burn mark and her skin had been burned. I was reporting to her or was reporting my sister-in-law's missing. They were there reporting their husbands were missing. What they told me is as they were evacuating from the hospital down to Chico, one of them, as she was driving down, her car caught on fire because of the heat from the fire.
Mr. Christensen?
Yeah.
We're going to have to ask that the comments remain about the expense, the request of the expenditure.
Okay.
To.
Let me get to that. Okay. The expense. And it's this. I drove up to Fiddletown the other day. Education road. People are going to be trying to come out of. And the president will be right there with the road. We need to clear defensible space along our evacuation routes. That's one of the issues that will be brought up at Smoke Chasers event is helping people further evacuation. Because I was part of the transportation. And decide where all the evacuation routes are going to be. So this is money that would be well. To prepare people and educate people on ways of getting out of, in case or when there is a major fire disaster in Amber County. So I support this wonderful program. It's a way to educate the community on what you do not only spend your house.
That's in this. Paul, it would like to speak on this agenda. Anyone on Zoom that would like to. Hearing that, you did.
We have Joyce.
Joyce, who are recognized.
Hi. I would like to say that this is bringing in a lot of funds to our community here at Plymouth. It's, they're bringing in people that are going to be at our restaurants and at our hotels. So it is bringing in funds to the city. So I believe it would be a good. I would believe, I believe it would be a good, good for us to give them the money.
Thank you, Joyce. Are there any other comments, council members?
A gentleman. Written by his family and so forth. Everybody understands that problem we're having is we're the only municipality that's putting up a dime, which is not fair. You know, we're, we're not going to get all the restaurants, all, all the hotel stays. They're going to, they're going to Jackson, they're going to South Creek, they're going to work. And they're not playing it. Why, why is Plymouth, the rest of Plymouth? $10,000 when none of.
I hear you very clearly. And that, that makes, that makes perfect sense. I know it did not occur. City, it was the city and this is where the fairgrounds are. However, we can't. Fun to ask so that if this is as successful as we hope, next, that's saying it's your turn. Then we go to South Creek and after that saying it's your turn. But we don't, I don't see a way of my being able to do that small.
We also, I also, I came to this last minute as well.
It's true.
Just about last minute for us as well.
Oh, it is, it is. This is incredibly compressed timeline. I normally would have. If I had people lying in, but we really didn't, we're able to pull the trigger because I would. Well, that's true. And so, and here and, and talking to that. So I, I agree, this is incredibly last minute and I have, I do apologize for that. So I'm just doing what I can at the last minute to get this moving forward. I'm also hoping this actually saves money because what's happening is all of these resources, we're asking to go out to every fire, issue, community center, county halls. We're taking the same resources over and over and over. Both hours, all those volunteer time, when we could be combining it, what we're trying to do in one place and actually get them more answers and more information. If even only 50% of the people go away, knowing how to get out, how to leave faster, how to get their animals out, that's 50% people that will not be calling on their resources in a pandemic crisis.
Again, we all totally agree with everything you said about that. This is the funding part would work very properly. I, I know. Not, not your mission, your mission is, you, you don't have to keep defending that. We, I totally agree.
So I can't help you with the funding. I do hope you see your way through to providing us with funds for this event. And all I can do is say that I can hope next year. Other cities for their funds. I cannot do that this year, unfortunately. But I do appreciate your at least considering it and hearing me out.
Again, I totally agree. It's, it's, I think it's a much needed and wonderful event. And so many agencies and people throughout Amber County, I think will benefit from this. Because it, it, it benefits so much more than just Plymouth. I have a hard time saying to the taxpayers of taking your money and, and. I'm sure you. Very small. Many things that need to be done. We also have some, some, some things that I want to take into consideration about how we, how we spend our TOT money and the process and timelines and, and that sort of thing. And to be quite honest with you, I'm, I'm just not comfortable allocating taxpayers' money for, for this, for this year under these circumstances. So that's, that's how I feel about that.
So I, I understand because it's a little, this is, you have Amber Fire Forest does get funding and I, that was why I, I grade that bit. And it does, again, mostly benefit them, it draws to the whole county. So.
Agenda, I don't think this agenda item has anything to do with any other event. Or agenda.
I have a couple legal questions. Because it's written up on the agenda. If we, if we did something in a different matter related to the funding with this, say a different dollar amount or whatever, could we do that tonight? Or does it certainly have to be on the $10,000?
Yeah, council did exercise discretion to go less than $10,000.
Okay. And then I guess my other thing is just a statement for future people who come in here and stuff like that. I understand it's a real attractive thing to put the whole list of, if we, if we become major sponsor. We get cups and we get all that stuff. Yeah, we don't need that on there. That's not, that's no good. But I, I get, I get why it's on there, but yeah, that's.
Just trying to get some.
Oh, I know, I know, I know. So the only reason I bring that up is, is I, I, in case we get in a logjam when we get further down in the meeting, right? Just maybe different avenues we can go down or something.
I'm going to jumpstart and I think I'm going to take your lead on that one because I'd already kind of covered the same idea. So I'm going to make a motion to give them $8,000.
I was not finished jumping, that's okay.
Oh, okay. Well, my, my motion stands. So you can.
Um, I was going to put our new interim city manager on the spot a little bit. It's time, isn't it? So, um, he has a great deal of experience with cities with a much larger budget than the City of Plymouth. We, and that's neither here nor there. My first comment was, and this has, this is probably the same staff report that appeared in the previous agenda for this item. But my concern with all of these staff reports within, with these requests is we keep approving requests and there's no cumulative accounting in the staff reports for what was budgeted and what has been expended. And, and so we're probably getting to a point where we've overextended what was budgeted without it being carefully looked at unless we constantly look at that information. So if you could address that and address some of your overview of TOT funding and your experience and what it's for.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you and happy to. I think you're talking about in the policy, it's up to 20% of your annual TOT, if I remember correctly. And I've been drinking out of fire boats for the last two weeks. So if I miss some of these numbers or if I'm thinking of something from a different city, I apologize. But I think up to 20% is what I read of your TOT each year can be allocated for these grants. I did find out that we've offered two TOT grants previously this fiscal year totaling about $15,000. And 10% or 20% of your TOT for this year would be around $43,000. So you have not exceeded the amount that my policy stated you would be willing to spend. So you're okay there.
But we've had additional requests that were, that were placed on an agenda by the previous city manager and listed as TOT funds. And so are those coming out of general fund, TOT funds?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe this. This is, this is the information that I, that one I acquired. I can certainly.
And the 20% is correct.
Yeah, I can certainly do some more research to see if that $15,000 is accurate, but that's what I received from staff is if there's only been two TOT grants, if that's incorrect, I apologize. Give me a few days to, to make sure that that's accurate information. As far as the use of TOT or any tax dollars, that's really at the discretion of the city council. It's a policy issue. I will tell you that, yes, your budget here is incredibly tight. You're, you're in a position where you've got about $1.2 million per year. $216,000 is what was budgeted in TOT revenues this year. I don't know where we're landing with that number right now because TOT numbers are coming in far below with the, with the pandemic. I don't know how we're doing here in this city. I haven't gotten that far in my, my research. But if you think about $216,000, that is the number. 20% being around $43, $44,000. What can you buy for $43, $44,000? Again, I've just started looking at the city's needs. For example, we need a new dump truck. Dump truck that we have is not safe to drive. Probably shouldn't even be driving that. Some of the research that we've done shows that we can get one for $60,000. It's a used dump truck. $43, $44, $45,000 pays for most of that. Is that, again, it's a policy issue. Is that, again, it's a policy issue and you're at an issue of every dime, every dollar is precious. Where are we going to spend it? That's, you know, that's all I can tell you. Where you spend it, that's council's discretion. That's, that's not up to me.
Right, and. Plymouth is not unique in the dependence in the general fund on T O T. But it's always uncomfortable to me because T O T in an economic downturn. Will not be there in the numbers that are projected.
Right now, you're looking at about, I think it's about seventeen or eighteen, if I'm correct, percent of your revenues. T O T.
T O T.
That's significant.
Right.
For, for a small budget that you have. So where you spend that money is your discretion. But there's a lot of things there that we are not able to, to afford right now.
Well, I'm, my biggest concern is that. Until we get to budget time. We don't actually know exactly how badly COVID has hit us with the T O T.
Yeah, we're pulling those numbers. I, I think we've got some preliminary stuff. I just don't know what those are or not.
But keep in mind, we didn't spend anything. There was also some T O T document.
Yeah, T O T goes into your general fund. So this isn't, this isn't money that's isolated and can only be spent on this. It's. It's, it's in the general fund that is at the council's discretion to spend on, on operations, on, on, on those things. So there's, there's no restrictions there. We had a little bit of a discussion about some potential restrictions, but you really have no restrictions there. As far as it being in the general fund, you can use it for general fund.
What I'm hearing is our budget's very tight. You have to make accounts.
Yes.
I mean, there's.
That's not to say that whether you decide to. Issue this grant or not is a good or a bad idea. That is, again, council discretion. Money is tight.
If, if, if I recall. We've provided T O T grants to the youth radio, four fires. The Rotary, I bet what I'm going to call the Rotary Main Street project. I don't know what else to call it. And then I think Kennedy Mine.
The Kennedy Mine was ten thousand dollars.
Oh, that was ten thousand. Okay, so I, it, it, so you three of ten.
After, after school.
You got me after school.
Different, different part.
Four, four fires. I don't remember how many it was. Ten. Rotary Main Street was five. We're up to thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I apologize, council. The information I probably have, maybe it's.
I'm there two weeks.
You're fine. I said.
That's okay.
I actually stand to put you on the spot.
So did anyone, Peter had made a motion. And I would entertain a second on that motion, but I didn't hear Peter's motion. I'm sorry.
I just made a motion to. Yeah, sorry. Thank you. No, I just made a motion basically kind of creative. Teeth, because I was thinking, what if we just came down a little bit? Now, they still were their knees back mostly, but not all of it. And I think that would be a fair, yeah, situation.
I didn't hear you say eight thousand or eight thousand. Thank you.
Sorry, guys, because I think talking, this one's going to be. I, I don't even know if this is something I can ask. Is there a dollar amount that we can ask? Would we feel comfortable with in a consensus if there is a dollar amount?
No, it probably gets out of order. You have a motion on the floor. So you, so you can't really discuss it. Either it's seconds or it dies or not in a second.
Right. Okay, we'll shoot on the second and just get to that point.
Is there any other?
We beat this one up a lot, so I'm done with you.
Roll call vote, please. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stan.
No.
Councilmember Russo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Eckerlin.
No.
Mayor Kleinfield here?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Item number seven point three on the agenda is to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh seven. Accepting as complete. The Shenandoah Fiddle Town Waterline Project with final cost of. Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and eighteen cents. And authorizing the city manager to execute and file the notice of completion. Stefan, do you have any in line arguments on this?
I don't, and I'm looking to see if Matt is here. Is, is Matt online? I would defer to Matt for any questions that you may have.
I am here and available to answer any questions. Good evening, everyone.
Now, this is a fairly routine matter and it looks like it's the same amount. At least the high dollar amount as what was authorized by the council for this project. So if you want to just go over a, a short overview.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So yes, it's, it's in the mount. The funding we received from the, the Fairgrounds project was two hundred and fifty thousand. So this definitely covers the, the construction portion of everything. So. Good there. There was a, a couple of change orders. One was. Basically, we found a lot of existing pipes out there that we had to. Kind of meander around that we didn't know were there. There's an old. Pipeline from the Royal Ditch Pump Station that goes up to the tank site. And there's also the well pipeline. So. We had to get creative and come up with some, some ideas there and Vin Seguera was able to make that happen. And the second change order was. The existing pipeline, there's, where we tied into, there was two main feeds that go into. Partway to town there. One of them was part of Reader's Project a couple of years back. And when Amador water was out there, they noticed. Found out that it was shut off, the pipeline. So there wasn't even any water going through it. So we had to flush it and disinfect it and it was a. Quite a deal. So that was the other changer. But everything else went really good and. I got an update from the Fairgrounds there. To get that buttoned up after, start after the fair. The air flow and. Yeah, get a bit of service or be able to use it at least. So all went good.
Matt, this is Doug Sam. Would you please describe this project from a layman's standpoint? This has been going on a long time and I think some of us kind of forgot exactly what this project represents. As, as to what it does.
Yes. So basically, before, before we started this, there was one pipeline out of the tank going towards town. And then it split off and went to two and then back to one. So we basically went on the upstream end of where the two pipes ended, extended it up to the tank site. So now we have two pipes from the tank. Almost all the way down to the, the brewery. Where the P R V station is. And this is going to help with distribution and, and flows in town and, and the fire flow. So it was a much needed project that was a part of the master plan. So. It was good to get it fit in and it was great to even have the Fairgrounds help contribute some funds to it.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on his agenda item? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak in regards to this agenda item? Are there any additional questions, comments from the council? I would entertain a motion on resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh seven.
Make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash oh seven. Accepting as complete the Shenandoah Fiddle Town Waterline Project. Final cost of two two seven nine four zero and eighteen cents. Authorizing the city manager to execute and file the notice of inclusion.
I'll second that motion. It has been moved and seconded to pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh seven. Roll call vote, please. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stan.
Aye.
Councilmember Russo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Eckerlin.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfield.
Aye. Thank you.
Item seven point four on the agenda is discussion and direction. On procedure and process for search and hiring of new city manager. I think Stefan is up again.
Yeah, this one, I did request that we put that on the agenda for your consideration. You all know I'm your interim city manager. I could be here for two more weeks. I could be here two more months. We don't know how long that time will be, but as I'm available, I'm here or until you get sick of me and say we're going to give. Go away or better, once we have somebody who's permanently filling the seats. Not the interim, it would be the city manager. As I've taken a look at the long list of things that needs to be done. It's become very clear to me that the highest priority, in my opinion, or one of the highest priorities, in my opinion. Is the recruitment and the placement of a. A permanent city manager in the seat that, that you can work with. So I'd ask this to be put back on the agenda for your consideration. There are some changes to the job description and I will just point those out to you. One of the things that I looked at. Is many cities that are of your size or even a little bit bigger, the city manager will double as the finance director. You oftentimes don't have both. The first city that I had an opportunity to manage was about seven thousand population. A little farming community. Not unlike in many ways Plymouth. And I served as city manager and finance director. We didn't have a finance director. That fell on my shoulders, as did many of the other tasks and responsibilities. You learn to wear a lot of hats when you're a city manager in a smaller community. And so we've added those finance responsibilities to the job description. It would be my recommendation that that's how we approach this moving forward. We do the recruitment. Find somebody who's able to do that. And see what we come up with in that recruitment. I can answer any of your other questions if you'd like with this. I think the process, you, you look at this once before. I think you were wise to kind of hold off until you have your interim city manager in place. And get that taken care of first. One of the things that I've committed is, is helping in that recruitment process, if you'd like, to be able to. Whether that's helping to screen or helping to kind of reach out to people I know or people that may be available to do this. To kind of walk us through that process of what it's going to take for your next city manager to be successful.
I have a question, Stefan. Is it unusual when you put out this job description to put a, a salary range in as well? Is that unusual or is that something you, you don't do?
No, I've seen it both ways. It, it really just depends on where you're at, what you're looking for. Your salary range here is going to be very different than the salary range for a city manager in a Bay Area city, obviously. But your cost of living here is considerably less as well. So it, it doesn't hurt to put a salary range in there. Just so that you can weed out folks who may be expecting to make two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year here. That's just not realistic. It's not going to happen. So it's not a bad idea. But. I, you know, I, I think I would consider that. I think we can talk about that. I, I'm not sure whether I want to go there or not with this, with this particular job. You might be setting a good expectation, might weed out the folks that are unrealistic and once they find out what you're willing to pay, they stay. I'll thank you. But.
I just wanted to point out that anyone that was seriously interested could go on the Secretary of State's. Website and find that information readily.
And truthfully, that's exactly what I do is I apply for positions out there if they don't have a, a salary range. I simply Google city manager salary and city. And it'll pull it up and there's transparent California that I show all of that information and that gives me an idea of how much the past city manager was making. So it's there. You can get the information. It's out there. It's up to the council if you, if you feel like you want to put a range out there or not. I think there are pros and cons to all of this.
Thank you. Good evening, Stefan. I heard you state a quote that's very common practice for the financial director or the financial manager, the city manager to be one title position. Previous council, former council, that was an issue that we had a hard time with. And of course, I would be a full-time physician if you're running both of those. I'm assuming.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, with. I guess my statement is that like ninety percent of cities this size are smaller. Do you see, see that with eighty percent?
I will tell you the city of a thousand, when you only have eleven, twelve total F T Es. Filling two of those up with, with, with a senior level position like that is unusual. In other words, having a city manager and an assistant city manager in a town this size, I've never seen that.
Okay.
I, I would say, I don't know the percentage, but I would say.
Okay, I maybe I should add.
Most of the time.
I heard what I, I, I heard the answer I wanted.
Most of the time, yes. You know, that's just one of the duties that you're going to handle finances. Now, you may decide after you do this. You know, you're kind of looking at that saying, well, we've got two F T Es there. We combine those into one. We're going to save some money, right? Yeah, you probably will. However, it might be a good idea to bring in a management analyst or something like that to help the city manager with some of those duties. But I wouldn't worry about that just now. Get your city manager in place first. Let that individual, she or he can take a look at the duties and things and then determine how they want. How they want to do it, what they recommend in the council.
How do you feel about looking hard to private companies? Person who's not been with the city or county or state? Would that be something you take a hard look at or?
Well, I think absolutely.
Do they come from, from an environment like? Like a city, city environment?
No, I don't, I don't think there's, there's anything wrong with hiring from the private sector. I think the challenge that you have is. You're, you're not calpers. That's, that's a challenge because most city managers that are out there that are working, that are doing this. They, they have a retirement that they're trying to build on and, and. Not having calpers here is going to hurt in that recruitment and the salary as well. It's a smaller city. This is an opportunity, I think, that fits very well for someone who has. Maybe they've already retired from another state and they're relocating or they, they just, they love this community. And I'll tell you, I, I mentioned this. If I were ten or fifteen years already into my career invested. I would be in love with this opportunity. It, it, the, the small town atmosphere, what you have going on here, it's, it's just wonderful. But I'm at a point in my career where I can't afford to do that. So I, I enjoy what I'm doing now. But you might find somebody in the private sector who doesn't need that retirement. And, and this fits very well with something you'd like to do.
The retired person who's collecting calpers now, they come here and we, we give a salary on top of calpers. They're double, they're double dipping.
Yeah, the problem is, is they can't, they can't be retired and collect retirement while doing this. And exceed, I think it's the nine hundred and sixty or nine twenty or whatever the hours are. There's a, a maximum amount. You're not going to be really looking at a calpers retired individual necessarily. You may be looking at somebody who has some other kind of retirement that's already done or maybe they've come from another state. And they're not collecting that yet. They won't be double dipping. They'll, they'll come and do this. Or retired police chief from another state or, or whatever it might be. You might find somebody in the private sector. There's got to be a learning curve. And I would, and maybe this is going off the agenda a little bit and I apologize if it is, but as we go through recruitment and you bring in a new city manager. Especially if they've not been a city manager before, you'll find people with management experience that they can do this. There'll be a little bit of a learning curve. My first time, I, I cut my teeth. You know, there was, I had a very patient mayor and council, which was wonderful, and staff. And you, you, you get a lot of on the job training as you're doing this and it's. If you get the right person in place and that's not bad. That's not a.
In my history, somebody that's really strong in the finance side. Isn't always really strong in the management side as far as running, running people, running operation. They're kind of two different jobs. Which way would you, knowing how we stand here, would you lean? The most for the finance side or for the management side?
You know, that's a good question. I, I think I would try to find somebody who's got some good ability in both areas. In the city manager career field. In the city manager career field, lots of city managers started out on the finance side. It's a common thing to see finance directors and CFOs promoted to become city managers. My predecessor in the city of Fairfield, before I went there, he's now in Santa Monica as the city manager. He was the finance director in Fairfield before he was promoted. So that's not uncommon. I think it's just the skill sets. You know, having both is great. There's a business side to that as well, that city managers are gonna wanna understand. That's not just being able to count them on, but knowing how strategically placed, utilized and going after those other revenues and putting the city at an advantage, so.
Can we call you 15 years' term?
If I'm still alive and looking to do some more work, absolutely.
Are there any more questions, comments strictly on the agenda item with the recommendations for the hiring process? Are there any comments on this agenda item from the audience and city hall? Are there any comments on this agenda item on Zoom? Not at this time. Any additional information from before we entertain a motion? Then I would entertain a motion on this agenda item. I'm gonna rephrase that because since this is for direction, we just have a consensus that we have, this is fine with us?
Yeah.
I think that's okay. And Frank is shaking his head yes, so. Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay. Item number eight on the agenda is council staff communications. City managers report, I was thinking you're the winner tonight.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you again, I'm having a great time here, it's been my pleasure the last two weeks. It's been an enjoyable experience thus far and looking forward to continuing to work with you and the staff here. There are a couple of things just wanted to let you know about. One, and again, forgive me for not having lots of detail or maybe getting some names of the events and things wrong. I believe there's a flea market that you've had every year, I think different rotaries have put it on. There's been a request for that again. It's kind of a short-term, I want to say that's the end of the month is when they're looking to do that.
The 21st.
21st of this month. So that's in a week or less, in about a week. One of the items that they're wanting to do is have liquor sales, mimosas and things, that breakfast that's going on. There's a requirement that they get, you know, the ABC license, certain things need to be done with the short-term around. It's my understanding that I do have the authority to approve those kinds of things. So just as a heads up to the council, it's not something that I want to get away from. I did have a conversation with, I think it's Elizabeth with the Rotary, was trying to put this together. She recognizes that they're pretty late getting this in and that it's a quick turnaround. My comment to her was that if they could get the ABC license and the other things taken care of, that I wouldn't have a problem approving that. But I wanted to let the council know and if I get some dirty looks from the council on that, then I know I maybe made the wrong decision there, so.
Can mobilize that best?
She feels like she can, the sheriff has to sign off on this and some others. I told her if she can, then I'll go ahead and sign off on it.
I'd really like a mimosa while I'm shopping.
I'd like you to have a mimosa. And then the other thing, just as an FYI, Michael, obviously, who was your finance director and the interim city manager, I have a pretty extensive list of things that need to be done. Probably the most glaring one is we need to get a budget before the city council and have some discussions. July 1st is the new fiscal year. I'm going to tell the council that I don't believe we'll be able to get this passed by July 1st. I'm trying to take a look at what our alternatives are, how much trouble we're gonna get into if we break that. It'll be the first time in my career that I have never had a budget approved by July 1st, so. And there's a list of other things, grant applications, some other things that need to be taken care of. I talked with Michael about if he'd be willing to help us out a little bit on a, kind of like on a contract basis, very few hours, maybe up to 10 hours a week at a rate of around 70 or 80 bucks an hour for him to come in and help us out and get some of these things done. There's some challenges with the budget, for example, you don't have, we call it module, in the software system that you use for your finance budget. I think it's Blue Mountain, is that the name?
Black Mountain.
Black Mountain out of Montana. You can do the accounts payables and stuff of that, but the budget prep module that you need isn't there. And so talking to Michael, he said, well, he's gonna have to do it some other way. And honestly, I don't know what other way they can do it. So it would be nice to have him here to kind of make sure we get those things done for you. As well as getting a contract with Black Mountain for that module so that as you're moving forward, we can do that. So I'm letting the council on, I think I have $5,000 of so I'm gonna go ahead and bring him in unless I get those dirty looks and then we'll bring a contract before the council's next meeting.
Why isn't he here, is he gone?
I was gonna say, I think I missed something.
I missed something too, where is he?
Uh.
I thought he was our finance director.
No, I wasn't aware, he's
Michael resigns.
Yeah, he is.
He's I missed the memo.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I didn't remember.
Oh, okay.
Michael's last meeting was the last meeting
He didn't say that.
That we had, yes. He, okay, so I asked Frank, I spoke with Frank about this and I also spoke with Michael about this, that his letter of resignation was not as clear as it probably needed to be because I immediately questioned.
Right.
Frank and I had a conversation here that
The law is not here, send up.
But I did have conversations, I had a conversation with Michael after our last meeting about just exactly this issue of finance work. Because there obviously is information that needs to be, you can't just drop. So there's information for a smooth transition that would be helpful.
Your solution is perfect, hire.
So I'll go ahead and move forward with that and then next council meeting we'll have a contract waiting for you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stare, did you have any reports or requests for future agenda items?
I'm still in shock whether the finance manager, I had no clue that he was here or if he's going. I suspected by reading that
We're gonna blame Frank.
Well.
I suspected when I read Rizkaya completely, when he withdrew from being a city manager, there was a group in the lines and he was gonna probably be out here at some point, whatever.
I mean Yeah, I'll just say that I did follow and say your resignation letter, so you're not clear that you're, there was nine full positions and
Okay.
I think you just left it at that, but I'm surprised to hear that. So I'm still surprised he's not there, so clearly it's not, not clear, yeah.
You're all good, Doug?
All good.
Councilmember Amoruso, you got any reports or future agenda items? Councilmember White?
Good.
Vice Mayor Echolit?
I'm good.
And I am also good, but I want to reserve some time to go over that list with Stefan. And I'm sure there will be several agenda items based on the list. So at this time, we're gonna move into closed session. So that means everyone has to go.
Oh, yeah.
Much longer than I would have anticipated.
I mean, for City on Work, the City Manager, our city council meetings almost always work best.
Council considered two items in closed session. There's no reportable action.